...best to, as we tell the mayor, to not muck it up too badly. So I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:03. And would you all please rise and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its人民, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I will call the roll. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Yes, here.
Ms. Nixon.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Truesdale.
Here.
And Mr. Hall is excused. I will be looking for a motion to excuse him. And the mayor pro tempum, Hamconley, is here.
I move to excuse Mayor Gerald Hall.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Mayor Hall is excused. My understanding is he is in Florida, where at one point it was colder there than here.
Uh huh.
I'm sorry. You should at least get to be where it's warm. Okay. At this point, we are welcome to the public forum portion of our festivities this evening. And the council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of this agenda. However, the council policy is to hear the public comment, not to ask on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on the agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you are willing to state your name and address for the record, we welcome it. Anyone wish to speak at this time? Come on down.
Eric Chappania. I'm a resident of Alpine Township. What I came here to talk about today is I met with our state representative, Robert Hewland, about the idea of the states calling for a convention to the United States Constitution to overturn Citizens United, the Federal Election Commission. And with the 2010 ruling where the split Supreme Court voted five for to declare that money is free speech and say that it can't be regulated, what this has done is it has allowed bribery to come into national politics. And many times, national legislators are bought up, both on the left and the right. It happens all the time with super PACs and dark money. So a lot of the time, we, the people, can't even look and see where this money is coming from. And that leaves our national legislators beholden to big businesses rather than beholden to the average citizens. So when I spoke with Robert Hewland, he said that he would consider this action. It's if two-thirds of the states call Congress or call for an amendment, then Congress has to act and then send it out for three-fourths of the states to ratify if the states so choose. He said he wants to hear from his constituency. And obviously, I can't go door-to-door. So I thought I would go to the local municipalities, the states and township boards, and see if you would look into this. I drafted a sample resolution. It can be changed, but it basically says, "We're calling upon our state legislators to call for a state resolution to the United States Congress to propose and send to the states for ratification a constitutional amendment to overturn Citizens United, the F E C, and to restore constitutional rights and fair elections to the people." So what this would do is it would get the ball rolling and then it would allow Robert Hewland to look into a state resolution, which would then go before the state legislature and hopefully pass. Because again, what this does is that it basically legalizes bribery at the national level. And so a lot of times, again, our legislators have become beholden to large businesses rather than everyday Americans.
Do you have a question? Certainly. Do you have an extra copy of your sample reservation?
I produce seven.
Thank you. Fabulous. We would love those so we can enter it into the public record. And would you be willing to come back and discuss it again? We were to put you on the agenda.
Sure.
March? Second birthday, March, what's that? Oh, I know where that comes from. You certainly ain't. Are you part of an organized group?
Yeah, it is.
On your own?
There's a group called Wolfpad. That is actively, it's in all of the states, but it's difficult to tell. But isn't it like sponsored by them? I wonder if this would be my way of contributing to this very loose and strong representation.
May I ask if you are a high school student or a college student?
I am. I actually recognize Mayor Hamconley, the first time I've been from debate. I just met her when I go to Fenwick Hills High School, which is in Alpine Township. And it's outside of water.
Of course, you're a debater. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will make sure the council knew you were here. And she can see you on YouTube. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Tracy, president of the Red Flannel Festival, 18 South Main Street. We had an organizing meeting and we have a brand-new grand marshal. So I'm just here to celebrate Donna Clark. And she's on the front. And we have a meeting toward the end of February with the theme and all that. So we'll get back to you, too. But we just wanted to say congratulations to Donna here.
Well, I have to say something then. Oh, Donna Clark is from North Grand.
When Michelle told me about this appointment, I was very surprised. And I felt humbled. And I said, "I can think of a lot of people that I know that would be a lot more stupid or more qualified." And then she said, "Well, everybody says that." But I really felt that and I just kind of had to think about it and let it absorb it. And as I did, I got to thinking, in 2016, we're going to move out of 2,016 square feet of the library. This position, this honor that I have, is something that comes from the community. Because had I not been the director of the library and had to reach out and make connections and collaboration with this whole community and have everybody giving and taking and going to their meetings and then coming to ours and then looking at the huge swell of the community grassroots efforts to the community building team and all the people that are coming together to build the heart of Cedar Springs. Our arms are around each other and it's in a big way. And we're dreaming big dreams of $10 million, starting with Phase One, which would be the library. And I thought, you know, and this is our 80th birthday from the millage in 1936. And it's our 100th birthday from when they, in 1916, bought the congregational church and put a library up in the towers. And Una, what was her last name, somebody? Anyway, it's in the Red Flannel story.
It is.
Her name, Una, stands for U-N-A. But anyway, she was the first librarian. And I thought, "We're having our 80th and our 100th birthday." And it's the year of the community and the Phase One of the community library and building the heart of Cedar Springs. And when I look around, and in Valentine, so this is very appropriate to say, we all love Cedar Springs and the heart of Cedar Springs is all of us as a community. And I know that as we grab hands, even though we don't always agree with each other, we have different ideas, we have different temperaments, we have just everything different. But we're all the same and that we're neighbors. And we love Cedar Springs. And we keep asking, "What is it? Kurt, what's our mantra?" "Lots of best for Cedar Springs." So I guess we have a wonderful honor, thanks to all of you and to the Red Flannel Festival and our, this is the 77th year. And that got my attention because seven is a good number in the Bible. And I've got two of them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
There you are. I can't wait. I've got to go buy a red. Or a burger.
Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the council at this time? Okay, carry now, we'll move on. We have no public hearing, correct? So at this point, I will be looking for an approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the adoption of Dave Ringler's new business as item A, renumbering all, or relitering all subsequent items B through E.
And also, man, and including that we were having a discussion on which will, what will become? C, item C instead of the...
There will be no wave of policy ball because we will be having a discussion. That has been moved.
I'm kind of actually, we're just going to have a bar and box ball. We're not going to buy it.
No, this is the public act.
Yeah, this is a...
Oh, that's, oh, it's now C, even though it was the, okay, yes. Yes, I'm with that.
Okay, so it's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six to zero. So moving on to the consent agenda. Council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is then ordered to adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda. Requesting removal of items from the consent agenda is prerogative afforded to each council member and does not require the support of other council members. And they are as presented. Approval of the minutes of the last meeting in January. Approval of the checks paid prior to numbers 38469 and 238542 totaling $574,370.80. January counts payable. Checks numbering 38543 to 38565 totaling $137,540.13 and electronic transfers totaling $1,165.59. The total of all checks and transfers is $713,076.52. And finally, the approval of Resolution 2016-05, Resolution approving the election inspectors for the March 8, 2016 presidential primary. Because your elections are a good thing.
I move to approve it as prescribed.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The consent agenda carries, six to zero. Correspondence. In your correspondence packet, there are the minutes of the CBDT meeting from November 19. There is the Right Place Newsletter, the GVMC Weekly Update Newsletter, the WMRPC Region Eight Notes. Any additional correspondence? Yes. Any questions about correspondence? Moving on to eight unfinished business. Discussion with the city assessor regarding city properties. Do we have the city assessor here to speak?
Yes, Jason is here.
Jason, come on down. Hello, Jason. I think we had some questions about processes, things. Deborah Sheed was our assessor for quite a while and then said, "Do come in, we've had some changes." And I think we're just looking for some clarification on what some of those changes are and why they've happened.
Okay, well, I don't want to speak ill of the other or anybody else who was previously in this position in terms of mine, obviously, in terms of pressure. Maybe it was because there was a fresh set of eyes, I don't know. But I'm just following the law and going through and making sure that stuff is done right.
Have the laws changed?
The laws have not changed.
Sean, I understand, right? They were talking about the tax and stuff on some of the properties that the city owned?
Yes. Yes, statute requires that all property is not exempt unless it's specifically called out in statute. The only thing that is exempt by ownership is state and federal property. Everything else is subject to taxation. City-owned property, communal property, village-owned property, township-owned property, school district-owned property is all subject to taxation unless it is used for a public use.
And how do you define public use?
Well, the courts have defined public use.
Okay.
You hand these out. It's in this memo. So I don't know if you want to get read it, but have it all in front of you.
I guess I'm just trying to get an understanding of how your definition of public use versus the way it's been defined previously is so much different.
I don't think it is different. Again, I don't want to speak ill of anybody. I just maybe they might not have known that it has to be used for a public use. But frankly, I just wanted that myself to share.
Certainly. Certainly.
On the charge that you gave us, Jason.
Yes.
I had requested that we see how the taxes would break out of the... Probably, that was a lot of work I know. So if we wanted to see that how much tax we are going to have to pay on each of these nine properties...
Estimate? About $3,000, of which about $1,000 usually paying years off.
Some of that's going to come back to us if that's still a lot.
Yeah, you have 15,000 dollars.
So just to clarify, I've got a few statements here. I want you to know that I agree with Linda last meeting. She claimed that I was trying to attack your sense of ethics. And I'm not, I am not. But what I am looking at, though, and I also want to say that I agree with Matt Wolfer. I know you know, as the director of Equilation in Kent County. And when I talked to him, he said, "Well," he said, "you've got to understand that honest people see things differently." So, and I agree with that. So I just want you to know, I'm not a tab to you. But I am trying to understand your view and your approach to applying exemption rules compared to other assessors, not just in the county, but in the area. So with that in mind, my, my understanding is that when we apply or when you say that the law says we have to apply, the exemption law is narrow. That's the way the law is written. So I have to assume then that other people who don't apply the law the way you do still think that they are applying the law narrowly. Because if they didn't think that, they would not be applying the law correctly. Would you agree with that?
No.
So you think they're cheating?
I don't necessarily think they're cheating. I think that maybe they haven't looked at their stuff. And well, if you're an assessor for a long time and it's a very easy trap to fall into, and I see it all the time. You don't, as an assessor, I don't go out and I look at every property every single year. It's impossible.
Right.
I'm not like a fee appraiser, okay? I'm not going to go out, measure each individual house every year and find three comparable sales and determine valuation. The same thing is true with all the properties. I'm not going to look at every single property every year. Well, I could, you can't afford it.
Exactly. Well said. So I guess my question then comes down to this. When you compare the way you apply the law to the way other assessors apply the law, what part, what, I don't, you can't put a percentage, I don't understand that. But can you name or could you identify for us, not right now, but at a later time, could you identify for us those municipalities that are doing similar things as what you're doing here with city property?
Is the assessor doing his job right? Every municipality?
That's not what I'm asking, though. I want to know who else is doing it this way?
I would assume everybody. If they're doing their job right.
To pinpoint for us, though, you know, later time, could you find, let's say, a handful of people in Kent County and our surrounding counties that are applying the law narrowly, very narrowly, the way you do? In the case, in the case of the city properties? So I specifically...
Are you asking me to go out to other assessors and see if they have municipal property on the roll?
I'm asking if you know of some that are doing it this way or are one of the only ones that are doing it.
No.
I think to clarify, could you give us some examples of that? Because again, this is a big change for us. So we have to then understand why for decades, this wasn't happening. Now, if you tell me the state changed the law, then I would say, "Oh, I understand. The state changed the law. It's applied differently." But you're telling me there is no law change. So what you're saying is, is that for decades, someone was getting it wrong. So if that's the case, can you show us where other people see it the same way you do?
No.
Okay.
Then that's what I think we need to know. We need to know if your concept of narrow is like pushing the envelope out there that anybody else is doing.
If you would like, what you could do is you could go research Supreme Court stuff. Every single exemption case will start out with the words, "Property exemption laws are to be narrowly construed and are to be in favor of the taxing authority and all burden of proof, even if it is the taxing authority, is on the taxing authority." Okay? The burden of proof is not on me. The burden of proof is not on another assessor that may be doing it wrong. Okay? I don't know what else to say.
Okay.
I can tell you that in November, in October, we had a meeting with our association. Okay, our Kent County Associates, Assessors Association, okay? At that meeting, there was a state senator there and he talked about how some junk is being taught on. I knew what he was talking about, okay? Because in another jurisdiction that I work for, there's a privately-owned social club, if you will, that hadn't been on the roll. When I came in, again, pressed out of eyes. I look at all the properties to make sure they're assessed or not assessed properly. I determined that they were not. I put them on the roll. They took me to court. I won. And they have tried to get the law changed, multiple, multiple times. He stood up in that meeting and thought that I was doing it because I cared how much money that municipality I worked for made. I will tell each and every one here, I care less about how much money the place I work makes. That's not my job. My job is to uphold my oath of office, which I took, and follow the law. And if the market says it's worth this, it's worth this. I don't care if the market goes down, I'm following the market. If the municipality is going to make less money because something should be exempt and not have it exempt, that's how it's going to be. Okay? In that meeting, then, Matt Wolfer basically said, "This is not how our assessors work. They follow the law and they do what the law is." His beef, if you will, the senators, was that in my unit, I had said social club on the roll. And in another unit within Kent County, a very similar club was exempted. I can't, I can't make the other person put it on the roll. We discussed it. We then subsequently had a November meeting, a December meeting. Exemptions were thoroughly discussed and trying to get everybody on the same page. So I know because of those meetings and because of very close friends of mine who are assessors, they're going through their roles as well and doing the same thing. So I know at other places, there are people who were exempt last year that will no longer be exempt.
Bringing the discussion back to the city properties, though, that's my immediate concern right now. How do other municipalities...
May I get a second?
I apologize. It's not within this gentleman's role to go out and find another city or assessor that's doing it this way. That's, if we feel that research needs to be done, this is where that research needs to be done. This gentleman, that's not a step.
Now, I only partially agree with you, and I have done some of that research. And there are differing opinions. And Jason has said, there are different ways of doing it. So what I, I guess what I'm seeing, Jason, is we have this law, this idea of narrowly interpreting, narrowly interpreting the law. But we have this big white band in gray from this assessor that interprets the law over here and this assessor who interprets the law way over here.
Okay, cool.
And so when it's not good...
I cannot control what another assessor does.
And I understand that.
I'm going to do the job to the best of my ability. I've asked our city attorney to provide a memo. She backed me up on 100% of what I've done and said I am following the law to the T exactly right and that I'm right in everything I do. I cannot control what somebody else does. Just like I can't control if Kelly Regler doesn't appraise the law and she comes in at $100,000 and I come in at $90,000. We're two different people. She's an appraiser, I'm an appraiser.
My point is I'm not two different people. My point is that there is a ban of difference and that there is, should be flexibility.
There is no flexibility and I cannot control what other assessors do.
Okay, I think at this point, have you got your questions answered?
Nope.
Okay, well, let's wrap it up. Because I do feel like he's made it clear what his position is. And then from there, it becomes council's job to...
All right. So when you're considering the application of the law, let's say more narrowly than a majority of assessors would apply the law, then who do you go to to ask questions, to get advice, to say, "Am I looking at this correctly?"
I just told you that. We have a memo from our city attorney who would back us up in court.
But is that who you normally go to?
Who would bend to court. I've been to court. I've won.
Well, that was on that one case, I understand.
No, I've won multiple exemption cases.
Okay, but I'm talking again about the city in particular.
Okay.
And so we're coming back to this question.
Maybe I can clarify the question.
I will look at documented court cases and what the Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals have ruled on. And as she has laid out in this memo, this is exactly how they've ruled, how I'm interpreting it.
Okay, so the way that you, just to clarify, the way that you come to your conclusions is based upon your understanding of court cases. There isn't like a person that you, to clarify. You're looking to see, is there a person? And you're saying there isn't a, you don't have like a higher authority commissioner person?
There is a state tax commission person. And the state tax commission person is actually the person that brought it up to me when I had other questions. And he said, "Well, I don't know if that's being used for a public use." And I said, "Hmm, I better look at some of that."
So is that the person?
No, they are not the final say.
Okay.
The Supreme Court is the final say. But the Supreme Court has basically...
Is that a chain of command, though? Again, I think we're trying to...
So yeah.
It's in your job, we're not trying to...
With any law, if you pass the law tonight and...
We don't pass laws, it's a certain...
Well, and your officer here decides to enforce it. And somebody doesn't agree with the law and takes it to court and wins, then that changes the law or the way it may be interpreted.
Sure.
And that's how, everything has been flushed out. Statute-wise, in this case, has been flushed out all the way to the top, which is the Michigan Supreme Court.
So just to be clear, on chain of command, it's you, then the tax commissioner, then the court?
No. Uh, so if somebody were to appeal, your first, your first stop would be at our local border review.
Okay.
The next stop after that, if they were, you know, they have all the same, they can't just willy nilly.
Of course not. I, I'm trying to clarify for you.
They would have to find something egregiously wrong and point to law themselves in order to reverse something that I have done, okay? From that point on, it was, it would be the Michigan Tax Tribunal. There are cases held at the Michigan Tax Tribunal, again, those are non.
Binding?
Precedent, precedent setting, okay? So when the tax tribunal looks at something, they look at, at each, this case only.
Okay.
And because I rule on this case, that doesn't mean that this case is the same situation. All right? From that point, you have the Court of Appeals and then the Supreme Court.
Okay, does that get your question answered?
Yeah.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Other questions?
All right, I appreciate, oh. Thanks for coming tonight, by the way. This is the first chance we've got to see this document, so it's kind of short-term for us to look at it.
Sure.
From what I read, I don't even know if I'm supposed to talk about what's on this document. Quickly and confidential?
This is from the attorney.
Okay.
I, I, I don't think, I, I believe what that means is it's not, correct me if I'm wrong, open to FOIA. I think, I believe correspondence between attorneys is.
You relinquish your right to.
We can waive, we can waive it.
We can make it public. But we did just get it twenty nine ago.
The city, city own multiple parcels within the city limits, with some of which are used but, or, or in part of governmental purposes or are leased to private parties or are not used for a purpose. The property that is owned by the city is not automatically exempt. So what I'm looking at is our, we have some property over on Pine Street, Fifth Street. We have the Maple Street, which will be a parking lot eventually. That's all taxable property.
And it's not being used. Now, if you, if it's a parking lot on December thirty first and it's going to be public use as a parking lot, then it would come off the roll for the following year. December thirty first is always tax that, and the use of the property on that day determines the taxation for the following year.
So we should post signs that say, this is public parking. So, um, I guess that was.
We could ask them to come back down after we had an opportunity to review this. Thank you for your time. Greatly appreciated.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to the discussion regarding the wastewater treatment plant proposed purchases. And I believe we were going to have Gary here this evening?
That's actually me. I'm Gary's boss, so I'm.
Russ, Tom, Badu's?
So.
Come on up and chat with us.
I should meet Tom, let's discuss some stuff first, right? Or do you want me to just go? Well, we can both go. Let's go.
Go. Get it done.
I'm not really sure what new information we can bring to light, but.
Well, we were looking at some of the specifics. We granted a, a pretty large amount of money to be spent without really, generally speaking, what we do is we, we ask for a list. But we understand this is part of a loan that has a timeframe and that it needs to be kind of compiled as we go and we're not entirely sure exactly how much money we have remaining post the last of the, although I think Linda was going to get us some numbers that were maybe a little more estimated.
I have those.
Okay.
Uh, the sewer is around two hundred and sixty and the water on average twenty five.
Okay, is what we have remaining?
One forty five, yeah.
And two sixty in the sewer. And then we were just going to hear, you were going to start with the list of the most critical?
Yeah, I believe, uh, last month I did explain to the council that we will be putting something together and bringing it to you on a monthly basis as we did, uh, replace the, I think we can replace.
Okay, so you were going to tell us about that? Cause nothing is so exciting as sewer water.
We did, we did put that, we did put that list together and it was in your council packet. It's a pretty expensive list of whatever.
And I do want to say I had a conversation with the mayor about this involving explanations of things that turn things and shift things.
And I can over there with you guys again, if you want to know what's, what we're trying to do here. So at the wastewater plant, the very first thing that really needs attention is valves and valve actuators. That should be in the, in the packet. Uh, our wastewater plant, there's actually three separate treatment plants in the same building. It's called an SBR plant, the sequencing batch reactor. The reactor is its own treatment facility. On each reactor, there are seven valves, seven actuators, from twenty four inch to sixteen inch to six inch. Those are designed for the life expectancy of, it's like twenty meter life expectancy, so.
And we're at twenty five?
We're at twenty, or nineteen. Just to be, not a guess, but it's like twenty, we're at the point.
We're there, we're there.
Yes.
C Warren says it was finished in ninety seven, but I thought maybe it actually went online somehow a couple of years before. It's all kind of, I didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, we're not really critical. Everything we have says ninety five.
And I, I was going to say, I, my understanding is from the mayor, we're looking at ninety five, so.
Yeah, it's a, pretty sure it's ninety five. Anyway, so at that life expectancy, there are things failing out there.
Of course.
Without these valves, that kind of does not work, period. It, it just doesn't. It's meant to do it staying with these valves in place. Because there's three of them, there's three completely different sets of these. Our intention in what this bid holds out is to replace one and two. Reactor number one and reactor number two. It's fourteen total actuators and valves. Money is still available. We want to do all three if we can because they're all the same age, they've all done the same amount of work over time. Does that help?
Yeah, no, this is very helpful.
Okay, but any questions though? I mean, that, that, that's basically what it does.
Can I share?
Certainly.
So on the, um, three reactors, I, I talked earlier about this, it's probably just for clarification, everybody here this. If we buy the valves for all three reactors at the same time, we can save a little bit of money.
Yeah, it's like, uh, thirteen hundred ninety one dollars, nineteen cents.
It's not a lot, but.
Well.
It's, it's.
As my dad would say, it's better than a kick in the pants.
There you go. So if we did, uh, buy all the react, probably your valves, valves at one, at one time. And, uh, we're looking also at buying the, uh, parts for the variable frequency drive. That's also very important to get done now.
Yes.
Yes?
And then explanation on variable frequency drives, right? After water gets treated through one of the three reactors goes into an effluent holding pond. Efluent is the term for treated water. But it's in that pond, there's two big fifty horsepower pumps that pump the water from the treatment plant to the eighty acre disposal field on Indian Lakes Row. Those pumps run on the VFD, a variable frequency drive. And what that does is slowly ramps the pump up and regulates the speed of the pump so you don't slam fifty horsepower, thousand gallons a minute, right into a massive drain field. It would just blow it apart if you do that. Those are actually only designed for an eight to ten year life expectancy. And we're at twenty years, it'll still be original from there. Again, it's another one of those credible components. If it goes out, there's no way to get the water out of the plant, so. The other two frequency drives are on twenty five horsepower rotary low pounds. Those are just, they're, um, it's rubber figure eights. It looks like they melt with each other to push thick crap. Literally, what it's doing is those pumps are feeding it over the belt thickener. In the plant, the belt thickener takes excess water away from the waste sludge at the plant. So that every year when we haul sludge, you're not hauling water by gallon. You get rid of that so you're putting all your money for the energy sludge. The water gets reprocessed from the plant. Without those, VFDs on those two pumps, you don't feed the belt. Also, the ten year life expectancy, also twenty years old, they're all the same age.
And let me just ask you a question to see if I can clarify, cause I had a very long conversation with the mayor on the phone about this and I'm not nearly as technically knowledgeable about this as he is. And so this is the part that we're replacing, if I understand, that at the time when we purchased it, it was made by a company that, it was very specific to this. But now when we replace it, we can get it from a company that has off the shelf pieces?
That's what, the VFD drive, that is correct.
Which that's a big deal.
That is a big deal, yes.
That's what, the mayor was quite adamant to me, that this is a very big deal.
So, so that would be, yeah, if you were to take these three items that we put, that are in your packet right now, it's one A, one B, and one C. Without this stuff, the plant, it doesn't work. The biggest thing is valves and actuators. Those at the time, there was like, maybe like two or three companies that made the actuators that would turn like fuck as necessary and you pick that.
And then they were very specific to the parts that they made? And so when we went with one company, we were then locked in?
You're under the proverbial thumb.
Right, and then they rose, they rose the prices, is my understanding? But we had to purchase from them to get the parts?
Right.
And now in replacing this, we can go with the company that is more universal in its heart?
In this thing, the ones we want to go with are road card valves. That's the industry standard valve, you get parts every.
And he said, you can buy them off the shelves. And I said, you mean like at Meyer? He said, oh, stop it.
Run those at Meyer. A lot of large, large problems that the treatment plant brings, a lot of proprietary systems or something. And you can't use different parts on or different, or have different people come in and service those.
I understand completely.
That's one of the main things, um, that we focused on when we do a project like that, is to get rid of that. So we're not, we're not stuck with one vendor or one service person. We can get somebody else.
It's exciting, that's an option.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And you can see the price difference in that stuff.
Yeah.
That's, yep. More than one pump in a barrel.
So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
How many valves are there per reactor?
There's seven.
So if I added, if my numbers right, if we were to buy the valves and, and the labor for the three reactors and the twenty one thousand dollars for the variable frequency drive, we're still under two hundred and twenty thousand?
There's also one other part that's in the packet.
Okay.
This is one of those things that is still a proprietary piece. So if you're looking at the duct bill valves and solid, sweeping valves.
Oh, okay.
That's also another, I mean, fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety dollars for that stuff. This is proprietary because no matter how different you do valve actuation, VFD drive and stuff, the guts that are inside the reactor are still made Jet Tech parts.
Okay.
Jet Tech is the company that made that SBR system.
Sure.
They are now owned by Violi, they're a Viola, I think is the name of the company. I have to look, cause I don't want to be wrong. Evolva.
That's the word. That's the part that Jerry was explaining to me about being more expensive.
Yeah, so Evolva owns Jet Tech technology. But in order to, for us to get away from Jet Tech technology and all these rubber pieces in there, we'd have to gut the whole reactor and start over again. That's millions of dollars, you don't want to do that. So Jet Tech works great, but all those parts that are inside, there are a couple with the valves and actuators. They're still twenty years old. They're made out of rubber, they've been wet and dry, wet. They don't handle your car tires over time, right? They dry rot and crack.
And that just means it involves poop.
No, no, that's a little harsh complaint in there, so. These three pieces would redo all three reactors internally externally. The only part left on the reactors is motor pumps and rotating assemblies. That's the part that actually does the spinning work. That we have stairs of. I don't know, a stair.
A stair.
We have a stair for these reactors, so that's, that's another problem. I don't know how far you want to get into this, but I'm hoping that next month, Gary, I'll, myself, will be here to present you guys with an assessment of facilities.
Yeah.
And what this is, is this stuff gets approved, awesome, we start ordering parts. By probably July first, all this stuff's going to be done and replaced. The AOF, assessment of the facility, we're presenting, is everything that's left in the plant that needs attention but put out in a roadmap for you guys, so you know for me to ask.
Sure.
During budget period, you know, April or whatever, when it's time to do the budget, we would like hundred thousand dollars. This is why, we need to do this, 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 this. Next year, we want sixty thousand dollars to do this, this, and this. Bring the plant up to speed over the next five years. That's the idea. That makes sense.
It does, yeah.
I think everybody's trying to work me out right now.
Question?
Yeah, 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 just to pull, yeah, to pull it all in, so you don't have to try and do this all on. And can we do all this stuff that needs attention at one time, you know, three million dollars?
And, and as I said, I, and again, I'm from Flint, grew up in Flint. I have family still there. I've been open to civil engineer. I have another open who worked at the water treatment plant. You're all amazing and I want to make sure that we keep facilitating that.
All right, and I, I really am glad to hear that because somebody's felt we don't like to do that, or someone do, obviously. And if I'm not mistaken, the wastewater treatment side of the city is like your second largest asset, I'm part of the police.
Yeah, um, five, five point four million dollars.
Five point five.
In that sense.
Yeah. And now there's a twenty year old Al, that's right now, so.
I'm a huge fan of my toilet flushing.
And at the end, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, our citizens, our constituency wants us to make the police show up, make the fire department show up, make the water running be safe. Make it, when we flush, it goes away.
So, and please understand, this is, this is where we're going to start out with. If we come in, uh, now we have money left over, we have other things that need to be replaced that we're going to use to have money for. And all we need is approval from the USDA to do that. We've already gotten approval from the USDA to do these projects.
And thank you for that.
And, uh, whatever else comes up, uh, you know, while we go into, we have to go into the heating system next uh, because that's train, that's proprietary.
Okay.
Right now, the, the system is supposed to, uh, take care of itself and adjust itself as all the sensors in the building, well, it doesn't. It, it fires, it fires up and goes full throttle, yeah.
We do oil boilers?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, fix your gas pedals, either all, everywhere on the floor, it's all the way off, one of the.
Right, it's supposed to throttle back and.
Yeah, it's not happening.
Well, it's right to the floor, every time the boiler turns up, so, you know, we're, that's, we're wasting time.
So that, I was going to say, that's costing us money in fuel.
Well, we were, back then, it's proprietary, it was trained. We're going to have to get rid of that entire system and get a system in there that we can actually use and program and, and, and change, so that's kind of, that's another thing I have to do.
Is that for heating the building or is that part of the sewer service?
For heating the building. Well, it's, it's also a hair, an air handling system. So it takes care of the, uh.
Feels?
The humidity in the building, like downstairs, it takes, takes the humidity out of the basement. Uh, that, it does a lot of different things, it's very complicated system. So, and the other thing too is with the, um, we've, we had originally intended to present some of that stuff as well this time, but we had a couple people put bids in to replace a boiler and do the A B and C. After further consideration, in an effort to put the best buck toward what really needs to be done, biggest thing we want to do, it will be spelled out in these assessment of facilities, is to get rid of the train unit altogether and replace it with something that is not proprietary. Something that we can have like Crow Heating or Bob Jones's Heating or whatever, we can come in and work on instead of having a train unit where only train can work on it.
The mayor talked to me about a lot of this, in that proprietary piece of that, as something that made him a little bit crazy for the last twenty five years.
The capital improvement plan, but there was no way going to get us to the, uh, where we needed to be.
So we maybe need to look at that some too?
We're going to have to redo the entire thing once we get done with this project. And we're going to redo, Russell and I will get together, redo the capital improvement plan that will, uh, push us to actually where we have to be within the next five to ten years.
That's fabulous. And there's another question?
Let's talk money again. So if we're talking about all the valves, all the valves for all three reactors, talking about the variable drives, variable frequency drives, and the.
Activators?
Uh, the rubber. Uh, the rubber parts. Rubber parts, so we're still under three, two hundred and thirty-four thousand?
Two hundred and thirty-four thousand, or two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
What goes for that? And we have two hundred and sixty thousand for shore gap or we still have other bills to pay on the summer project?
That's most of the bills that are outstanding.
So, so there are still some bills outstanding?
Right, so we don't want to cut it back, so we want to do these projects, see where we're at. At the end of these projects, if we have money left over, we get approval from the USDA to do the next portions.
Which projects, huh? Which, I thought we just said that these are all, we need to do all of these now?
Yes.
That's two hundred and thirty-four thousand?
Yeah, we're doing all of this now.
So are we going to have two hundred and four thousand left after we pay the other bills? Will we have a ten thousand dollar cushion?
We should have thirty thousand dollars.
Well, we said two sixty, but she said there's more bills to come in.
No, that's the bottom line.
Oh, that's, that's what I'm going to get here, that's what I'm going to get here. I knew that we approved the spending of the money for all three, for whatever.
We don't need approval, it's already done.
I was going to say, we approved it at the last meeting.
Well, this kind of limits, this kind of limits where we are though. This says we're not going beyond the actions that we're already setting, the valves and the three reactors, we're very specific here. And we're talking about the variable frequency drive.
But I think we approved at the last meeting to spend the remainder of that.
Two sixty, correct.
Yeah.
So, once we're done with this project, if we have...
We didn't have a number though last time.
If we...
We framed it as the remainder. I could be wrong.
I prefer to be a little more specific though, rather than being general.
You are correct. The board did, with Bob's blessing, say we need to spend the rest of this money.
And I, I agree, like I, because obviously we have more due.
It went to a vote and it was only one standing member.
So we have basically, just to clarify, about thirty thousand left, approximately, we won't know exactly, I understand. And then you will be coming back to us with what we're going to do with that?
To the thirty, meaning thirty. There's also, I don't know, we want to go...
Thirty, whatever, yeah.
We have money set aside from the last year's budget actually too, to do other things, I don't know, that's like, or forty-some thousand dollars. Sixty thousand, or sixty thousand.
So the intention is to combine the sixty with the remainder to get through this, this heating train unit?
What we're going to do is, with the leftover money from the USDA rule development, is do these projects with that money. And then at the end of this, we're going to do an assessment and say, what can we, for the best bank for our dollar, do with the fifty left over, or the thirty left over, or the ten thousand that's left over? Or we may not have anything left over and we won't use it. As far as regular repairs, we're going to knock out, use that sixty thousand dollars for the capital improvement plan.
Rotating assemblies probably, that's what I suppose.
Those purchases will have to come back to the council, we'll have to get free...
Right, I'm just trying to get a clarification on the list. So we have this list that you're giving us right now that includes the plastic parts and the actuator valves and so on. The heating, the heating system is a if we have more money.
Correct, yes.
That's not part of the...
No, that's not part of the...
Okay, that's the if we have, but that's going to be more than thirty thousand that we have left.
We don't know.
We don't know, okay. Do you, no, I'm just trying to get a picture. I'm trying to understand how much, what, I'm not being critical, I'm just...
No, 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 and I'm not painting it that way at all, trust me.
Okay.
We don't, we wanted to focus on this stuff.
And you did, and you're amazing, and it's fabulous.
This is what makes the plant go.
Okay.
Put jackets on the plant for a little while, until we do some of the...
So my next question is, and maybe this is, maybe you can answer it, maybe you can't, maybe Tom can answer it, maybe you can't. So let's say we have thirty thousand left in this Omregon. Are we allowed to combine that thirty thousand with some of our own money that we have set? Or does that thirty thousand have to be, like, spent encapsulated?
I don't think you can combine it all, because the stuff you set aside for the budget has to be approved by you guys.
I understand it has to be approved, but I'm saying within the scope of, that's what I wanted to know. So like if the train system costs fifty thousand dollars, could we put thirty thousand of that and twenty thousand of what we had budgeted to do it? And the answer is no, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, so we would have to find something else that fits within the scope of that remaining on it.
That fits within our capital improvement plan.
Right.
Of things that need to be addressed. And like I said, once we get done with this, Russ and I will be addressing that capital.
But it might even mean that we leapfrog not necessarily to the absolutely most expedient thing because it costs more money.
We want to spend every dime we can, RV money.
I'm just trying to clarify, that was not clear in my head, how that system worked. And you have clarified that for me. Is that clear?
Wonderful.
For anyone else? Okay.
So what are they going to do with the twenty thousand left over?
Great, Scotts. I feel like we're all going to see a through it.
I greatly appreciate your thinking, very complicated, funny, yes, I just wanted to say, I greatly...
Oh, go ahead. I've looked at some other city websites and they're going, "No wipes in the pipes." Is that an issue here?
Yes, it is.
So we should start telling people, "No wipes in the pipes," it's all kinds of goofing stuff.
No, it's a good idea, baby wipes are one thing, the worst thing is shop towels, those are the bad.
Our web person is here, we could maybe make a recommendation on what should be on, and if maybe you could even get with her at some point and give a list of things that we should make sure we go flush?
Absolutely, and I think, somewhere on your guys' website, I've written up like a three-page thing about...